Adequate notice of this regular and executive meeting setting forth time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on January 6, 2020, and April 21, 2020 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements. Transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, the way to the Wayne today, tap into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and on the district website. If you could all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Mr. Moffett, can we have a roll call, please?
Ma'am, Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mrs. Putta?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Here.
Okay, this is normally when we would have our superintendent's report. Unfortunately, he's having technical difficulties. Hopefully, he'll be able to join us shortly. Meanwhile, Mr. Moffett, if you could read any revisions to the agenda.
Yes, we have one revision this evening, which is under item T, emergent human resources, number two, which is approval revised items. In that grid, it's number three, and we'll need to revise the end date of the six-period math at Wayne Valley, which will now read from May 14, 2020, to May 15, 2020. That is the only revision or change to tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to open to public comment on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment, like I just said, on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. There's a phone-in number on the website. If you're not on Zoom, I believe it's *9 on the phone, Mr. Bichard. Is that correct? If you want to raise your hand?
That's correct.
Virtually. At this point, I don't see any raised hands on Zoom. If you're on the phone and you wish to speak, press *9.
Seeing no one want to speak, I move to close.
Second.
That's Mrs. Shear and Mr. Giordano. Thank you. Next, we have approval of committee minutes. Can I get a mover?
Second.
Who was that? I'm sorry. Oh, Eileen moved. Mr. Giordano, second. Sorry, Mrs. Albanese. Are there, is there any discussion?
If I may, who was the second on that?
Mr. Giordano.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? Committee minutes? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. This is when we can have committee reports. Have there, are there any reports this evening? Committees that have met?
The Communications Committee met today. Do you want to report on that today or wait till the next meeting?
I'm sorry?
I said the committee, the Communications Committee met today. Do you want to do that for next meeting or this meeting?
No, now is fine.
Okay. The Communications Committee met today. Present was Dr. Toback, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Duffy was absent from the meeting. There were three large topics that were covered. We talked about the media coverage, especially a lot of the articles being brought by the Tap Into website. They mentioned about an article called "Raising to the Challenge," which was a very nice article about students and people around town raising to the challenge of the COVID-19 situation. We also released a new newsletter, and one is coming out next week. Both of them were deemed outstanding, in my opinion and the opinion of those who've read them so far. So kudo to those people who are doing the newsletters. The Wayne Township Public Schools has a coronavirus update center on the website. It's a source for all things COVID-19 and related issues. They decided to work in conjunction with other agencies so that there's only one source of correct answers going out, so there's no scouting of the information. As a side note for that, which wasn't the intention of it, but we're glad to see that the New Jersey Public Schools Relations Association thinks so highly of the site that actually may be up for an award. So we're very happy to see the efforts of our people in town. Dr. Toback being a large part of that. I believe it's Ms. Lee is one of the people who's also part of the website work for that one. Again, before, as they said, it's not the idea to go out and do this just to get awards, but it's nice to be recognized. We have such a superior website that people would even consider recognizing it. Other than that, we talked a little bit about the recent media coverage, which has been, you know, repeated and repeated and repeated on all networks. And the, this area is a very big one on the COVID-19 situation. We're still very much in the thick of it, and that was, of course, the predominant topic for most of the media coverage that we've seen regarding Wayne. And that is our, that was the presentation Dr. Toback gave us for the Communications Committee agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
You got it.
Anyone else? Everyone else reported out at the last meeting? Okay. And we'll move on to the M items, human resources. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mrs. Kumar, thank you. Any discussion on the human resource items? Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Yes. Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
I'm sorry, I was frozen. Could you just tell me what I'm voting on?
We're voting on M. Yeah, just the human resource items under M, items one through three.
Okay, yes, thank you, sorry.
We'll record that as a yes. And Mrs. Albanese?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we have 10 retirement blurbs to read this evening. So I'll recognize each of you one at a time, starting with you, Mr. Giordano.
Okay, thank you. My retirement is Myra Arias. Mrs. Arias is a consummate and caring professional. She taught Spanish for 34 years, 17 of them at Wayne Valley High School. During her time at Wayne Valley, Mrs. Arias has taught all levels of Spanish language, from Spanish I to Spanish V honors. Her passion to teach the Spanish language and culture is infectious, which has helped her students to appreciate the importance of learning a foreign language in today's global world. Myra is an educator who is constantly evolving and creating, learning new methods, and bringing a fresh enthusiasm to her approach to teaching. She is empathetic while expecting the best of her students, which is nothing less than she gave to them. Her decades of service have contributed to the success of countless young people she was charged, she charged to the district to instruct and encourage. She's a role model and mentor to many of her colleagues. Her collaborative nature demonstrates her unselfish approach to education, always having the best interest of our students and the World Language Department in mind. Myra is well-liked and respected by her colleagues, administration, students, and parents. She never misses an opportunity to help someone or at least some, let someone know how much they are appreciated. Myra, we will miss you tremendously. We wish you many years of happiness and relaxation as you transition into this new chapter of your life. Congratulations on your retirement.
Mrs. Kumar? Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Hi, so Elsie Mara. As of June 30, 2020, Elsie will have taught 25 years in various public schools in New Jersey. She taught four years at West Orange High School, three years at Caldwell Elementary School, 17 years at Wayne Valley High School, and one year at Wayne Hills High School. She has taught various Spanish classes such as Spanish V honors, Spanish IV honors, and Spanish Two Enriched. She is extremely passionate about teaching her students the importance of learning the Spanish language and its culture. Her students were able to experience deliberate and disciplined learning environment. Elsie is empathetic and caring with her students, but she expects the best of them all. Her decades of service has contributed to the success of countless young people she was charged to instruct and encourage. Her impact was equally felt in our Foreign Language Department as she has been a mentor to many of her colleagues. Elsie has always put the best interest of her students and our World Language Department in the forefront of all she does. Well-liked by our colleagues, administration, students, and parents, Elsie has been a vital part of our department. We will miss you tremendously, sorry, we will miss you tremendously, and we wish you many years of happiness and much success as you transition into a new chapter of your life. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. You only had one?
I think so.
Okay. Mrs. Putta?
I will be reading about Hector Sanchez. Hector Sanchez began his journey with Wayne Township Public Schools 25 years ago. Employed through the district's Facilities Department in 1994 as a part-time custodian at Tunis Di Elementary School, Hector performed his duties quietly and correctly. While working part-time on a second shift, an opportunity for a full-time position came open a year later at Tunis Di. Hector accepted and performed very well in the eyes of the plant manager. Besides the maintenance aspects of the job, Hector displayed another skill. He possessed the ability to do some electrical work, replacing light bulbs and lighting ballasts within the ceiling light fixtures. Soon after, Hector was doing several other basic electrical repairs to equipment such as floor scrubbers, vacuums, and various equipment found in the school's boiler room while still performing his custodial responsibilities at Tunis Di. Four years later, another opportunity came around for Hector. The Facilities Department at that time was creating a small second-shift maintenance crew that would perform plumbing, painting, carpentry, and electrical work that needed to be done during the evening because it was not feasible during school instructional time. Hector was given the opportunity to further his skills and training to become the electrician the district needed at the time. For the next 20 years, Hector remained on the second shift and worked as an electrician doing many in-house construction projects, installation of classroom overhead projectors, power poles, outside light timers, and outlets for computer labs, while still making repairs to the district's small cleaning equipment, saving the district outside repair costs. Many times, Hector has shared with his coworkers his love for his children and his grandchildren through many proud stories. A shout-out from all of Hector's coworkers says, "Hector, stay as you are and enjoy your family in retirement, Mr. Two Wires." That is the nickname Hector's coworkers have tagged him with throughout the years. Thank you, Hector. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Putta. Mrs. Shear?
Okay, I have two to read. The first one is for Bobby Sazjak. The secretarial support to an administrator is a key position within a school district. Bobby filled that role through her years here at Wayne Township Public Schools during her 25 years of dedicated service. She began working in 1995 in the business office as a confidential secretary. A few years later, was needed again as confidential secretary to the superintendent's office, including areas in secondary education, for the next 20-plus years. Her knowledge of the school district and the Wayne community as a Wayne resident has always been valuable in discussions with the department. Bobby is a consummate office professional. She consistently arrived 30 minutes prior to the start of the official workday so she could organize and prepare for whatever came her way. She had a historical perspective of all the inner workings of the board office and never hesitated to ask questions if she did not understand a procedure or assignment. Her positive attitude and relationships with her coworkers was an inspiration. Bobby genuinely cares about the people she works with. As an urgent need came to fill an open secretarial position within the Office of Facilities Management, Bobby, like a dedicated employee, accepted the position. Working in the Facilities Department has brought Bobby full circle by seeing and participating firsthand how the frontline challenges and rewards the Facilities Department experiences daily. Bobby is a team player, pleasant to work with, dedicated, and reliable. Over the years, you could count on Bobby to make the holidays special. She would bake some of her favorite desserts and breakfast items and set up a beautifully decorated holiday spread to go along with it to share with the central office staff. A shout-out from all of Bobby's coworkers in the central office and the Facilities Department. We love you and enjoy your family in your retirement. Congratulations. The next one is for Mark Puglisi. Mark Puglisi has worked for the Wayne Township Public Schools since 2001 as a history teacher at Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley. Prior to his time in Wayne, New Jersey, he was an educator in Hagerstown, Maryland. During his time at Wayne Valley, Mr. Puglisi taught various history classes such as U.S. History I and U.S. History II and AP European History. He was well-prepared and passionate about teaching his students. Mark consistently reinforced to his students the importance of knowing history and why it would help them to become responsible citizens. He provided his students with wisdom to help them think about the future. He helped them to reflect about life by learning about what people have done in the past. Mr. Puglisi instilled in his students that history teaches us to learn from tragic mistakes of past individuals and societies and to prevent the same mistakes being made over again. He was genuinely empathetic and caring to students. Mark, enjoy the next chapter in your life with your family and friends. Enjoy the years ahead of relaxation and travel as you transition into retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Shear. Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
I also have two to read this evening. The first is Ronnie Brass. Ronnie has worked for over 15 years for the Wayne Township Public Schools District as a secretary. A longtime resident of Wayne, Mrs. Brass worked the majority of those 15 years in the district's Facility Management Department. Through her responsibility for issuing building permits, she developed relationships with her fellow Wayne community members. For the last two years, Mrs. Brass worked in the Students Support Students Support Services Department, developing new relationships in the department while surrounded by her lifelong friends in the building. Her friendly demeanor and conversation will be missed by the staff. When not at work, Mrs. Brass is well-known by her colleagues and friends for her trips to various places around the world, and she is well-versed in many different countries and cultures. We are sure that her new spare time will be filled with wonderful friends, travel, and enjoying her new grandson. Congratulations, Ronnie. Next, I'm going to read Kate Kay. After 32 years of service to public schools, of which Kate Kay has served as both the counselor and supervisor in the Wayne Public Schools District for the past 20 years, Mrs. Kay is retiring. Throughout this time, she has been a dedicated, thoughtful, and caring staple within the Counseling Department of Wayne Valley. During her tenure, she made a positive impact on the Wayne Valley community as a whole. The college application process and navigating high school can often be difficult and full of challenges. However, Mrs. Kay has helped countless numbers of students and their families feel confident when making difficult decisions for their futures. Always guiding with empathy and understanding, Mrs. Kay has a unique ability to motivate students to reach their highest potential. The connection she has been able to achieve with her students and their families has been long-lasting and can be attested to by the numerous students who often return to school to see her. Filled with a wealth of experience, knowledge, and insight as a counselor and leader, Mrs. Kay is often relied upon by her colleagues, either as a sounding board to brainstorm or bounce ideas off of, or often as a critical confidant. Fellow counselors, teachers, and the administrative staff could always count on Mrs. Kay to share her experience and wisdom when challenges arose. As a leader and mentor in the department, she is always willing and able to share her expertise with her colleagues. The advice and guidance she has given to her departmental colleagues has left an undeniable positive imprint on their growth, both as counselors and a positive impact on the department as a whole. Mrs. Kay will be missed by colleagues, administrators, family, and most importantly, by her students. For her dedication, professionalism, and for her willingness to help others, an enormous thank you to Mrs. Kay on behalf of the entire Wayne Valley High School community. We wish her the very best of luck and enjoyment as she embarks on her retirement journey. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Duffy? I believe you're next.
Yes, I have Lynn Coopeds. Lynn Coopeds has served as a paraprofessional for 28 years in Wayne Township Public Schools. She's always known to go above and beyond in the classroom. She's always the first one to bring in supplies from home or to show up for outside school activities, like back-to-school night. She takes the time to get to know every single student on a personal level. She's a constant, she's a consistent and constant rock in the classroom. She has the most positive outlook on life and can always find the good in any situation. Whenever she's done working with a student, she lets them know that they have made her proud. These students adore her and rely on her comfort and support throughout the school year. We wish her the best of luck in retirement as she spends more time with her husband Jimmy in getting ready to be a grandmother for the first time. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mrs. Putta, I believe you have another.
Yes, thank you. Dawn Levine. Dawn Levine has served the Wayne Township Public Schools for 22 years as a special education teacher and has over 30 years in the field of education. She holds a bachelor's degree in special and elementary education and a master's degree in education, both from William Patterson University. Throughout her years in the district, she has supported a wide range of students, and in these final months before retirement, she is proud that she has become more tech-savvy than she has ever been in her entire life. The Tunis Di community and Wayne Public Schools wish her a wonderful retirement filled with love, travel, and time with her grandchildren. Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, well, that leaves me. Last, but certainly not least, Reverend Dr. Karen Holgerson, aka Dr. Hoagie. In 1986, Ms. Hoagie started teaching as a fourth-grade teacher in Houston, Texas, and Dr. Hoagie is finishing her career as a fourth-grade teacher in Wayne, New Jersey. During the 30 years in between, almost half in Wayne Township, Dr. Hoagie taught elementary school in three different countries and in three different states. She has taught students in the inner-city, small-town, suburb, and large-city environments that were part of private, parochial, and public school systems, including the American School in Abu Dhabi, United Arab Emirates, and a school in Beirut, Lebanon during bombing. Dr. Hoagie also became certified to teach the academically gifted students K to 12 and received her ED in Educational Leadership, Management, and Policy from Seton Hall University. Dr. Hoagie credits her long career as a classroom teacher to the fact that she loves children and she loves teaching. This is supported by the fact that she is the most visited teacher at Pakenak by high school students who return to visit their elementary school teachers. Dr. Hoagie, don't be surprised if I show up on your porch in your retirement to visit. We wish you a long, healthy, happy, and peaceful retirement, and the same goes for all of the retirements we've read this evening. This is a lot of people that we're saying goodbye to, and we thank you all for your years of service to the Wayne Township Public Schools. Okay, next. Unfortunately, we still don't have Dr. Toback. We're moving on to school resource finance. Oh, can I get a mover?
I move. I'll second.
Mrs. Putta? Mrs. Albanese? Any discussion on the school finance items? Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Mr. Duffy? Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to administrative emergent. I just have a question. I don't think we received the HIB report. Was it, could we open it online? So are we approving something we've seen?
I can check.
We usually get a separate copy of it. I just want to make sure we're not voting on something sight unseen.
I'm looking online now, and I do not see.
Is there executive content on that one?
Checking.
I don't recall. I looked at the.
Just the case numbers.
Long and down.
Yeah, under the public content, I do not see any attachment.
Actually, it says first reported to the board on April 2nd, and we're just now approving it. So I guess, okay, very good. I answered my own question. So emergent administrative, can I get a mover?
I'm a.
Mrs. Shear? Mrs. Kumar?
Mrs. Shear and Mrs. Kumar.
Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, emergent education, S. Mover?
I'll move.
Mrs. Albanese?
Second.
Giordano? Got you that time, man. Any discussion on the emergent education items? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moffett, were you able to reach the superintendent and give him a call-in number by any chance?
I did not.
His phone is not working?
I did not.
I'm checking on his status.
Would you like me to call him now? Do you want to finish the agenda?
Well, you can reach him if you could give it a try. Meanwhile, we'll wait one second while you mute yourself. I want to make sure we don't wrap up without him. We're getting to the end. I know he had a report to give. I know he had a report to give. We'll be with you momentarily. Don't go away. We're still trying to see if we can get the superintendent into this meeting. You're on mute, Mr. Moffett.
I have the superintendent online on speaker with me.
Okay.
Difficulty, everything's on his computer, so any reference material he has, he doesn't have access to, but he'll state if there are questions that maybe we can answer.
Okay, well, so far, we haven't had any public questions, so unfortunately, you can't access your superintendent report, Dr. Toback?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we won't put you on the spot. We could table that to next week. We are having a meeting in a very short period of time. Meanwhile, we'll continue with the agenda and see if there are any questions in the second public portion. Thank you for that, Mr. Moffett. Okay, next is emergent human resources, T. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mr. Duffy? Mrs. Albanese? Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Emergent school resource finance, V.
I'll move.
Mrs. Shear?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Any discussion on finance, V? Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Mrs. Putup?
Yeah.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're on to W, emergent school resource grants. Can I get a mover?
I move.
Mrs. Putup?
I'll second.
Mrs. Kumar, thank you. Any discussion on the grant? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're on our second public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. If you're on the phone, star nine raises your hand, and if you're on Zoom, there's a button for that at the bottom of the list of attendees, I believe. I see two hands raised. Donna Reaver, can you unmute Donna Reaver?
Donna Reaver's account is now unmuted.
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Name an address, please.
Okay.
Procedure.
I know. Donna Reaver, first grade teacher at James Fallon and the first vice president of the Wayne Education Association. As a teacher in the middle of this distance learning, I did just want to take a moment to commend our board, our administration, and our amazing teachers and staff. Everyone has worked so hard to make this such a seamless transition for our students and really their families as well. This is a learning experience for all of us, and it's been really nice to work together for our students, for the common goal, to help them succeed through all of this. We also just wanted to make the board aware of some things that we were able to do as an association. We receive a pride grant through NJEA to fund many of our programs that we offer to the community. However, once we learned that many of our events would need to be canceled, we immediately contacted NJEA to try and reroute our funds. We also reached out to Wayne's Custodial Association and our Paraprofessional Association, and we were able to combine our three grants to equal about $30,000 that we were able to give back to our Wayne community. With that money, we were able to donate meals to the doctors and nurses. We donated iPads and baby monitors. Make donations to St. Joe's Wayne, St. Joe's Patterson, Mountainside, St. Mary's, and Chilton. We were also able to donate funds to the WIN and Wayne Helping Hands, and we worked with our own nurses to coordinate meals for our Wayne families in need. We were able to get them dinner for a family of four from Positano's on one side of town and Tastetaskini on the other side. We also were able to connect with the Clifton Association, Education Association, and we donated iPads to the Preakness Healthcare Center. So our hope is that by us doing this, that, you know, more locals will do the same, and we can really help our community during this time of need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What a great report. I think we have another hand up. Mr. Bouchard, it's a telephone number.
Yes. Telephone number 201-396-97.
Are they unmuted?
1-5 is unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Stuart Resmer. Stuart Resmer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Point of order, it's taken nine different numbers on your list to get through, and several attempts with the meeting ID number that were all rejected till it finally took it. So as a point of order, I wanted to mention that to you. The other point of order, you didn't come up on channel 77 until 8:07, just a few minutes ago. I thought you'd like to know. What I'd like to speak to tonight is the lockdown and COVID-19 and the issue of schools. I sent the superintendent something from the American Federation of Teachers. It's a five-point plan of what they'd like to see before the schools open. If you haven't seen it yet, you should. It's their position paper, if I may call it that. I've been up at the William Patterson Passaic County Health Department test site. I was up there for almost three weeks, every day that they were open. I have seen these people come by the hundreds in those cars. I have heard the children scream in the back when those swabs have been put up their nose. They've been terrified. We had one woman go code blue in the line. They got her in an ambulance, and she never made it to St. Joseph's Hospital right around the corner. Before anybody, anybody starts talking about opening up the schools, I object. Until such time, as somebody somewhere says it's a sane thing to do. All this stuff that's coming out of you-know-who's mouth from you-know-where about these ideas they have about this pandemic should be utterly and completely discarded. I'm telling you, I have seen these people by the hundreds all day long come up to that test site and present themselves for help. This is nothing to be fooled around with. New Jersey just logged the biggest single day of fatalities from this disease since we've started this. So really give them some thought as to when you're going to open these schools again and stand up to this nonsense of people who prematurely want to open these things up. And finally, on a lighter note, happy birthday, President Kazan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any other hands raised. Mr. Bouchard, star nine if you're on the phone, and press the raise your hand key if you're on Zoom. No one? Okay, can I get a move to close public portion?
I'll move.
Mr. Duffy?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Okay, well, we don't have any questions for you, Dr. Toback. Does anyone have any old business? Oh, did I need a roll call on that? Closing public portion? I don't think so. No. Any old business? New business?
Just real quick.
Go ahead, Mrs. Kumar.
I just wanted to kind of comment on everyone's retirement. I know it's really hard to not be able to say bye to people, and I hope that at some point, everyone can come together and say goodbye and actually, you know, fully retire and get that kind of closure. And we do really appreciate all of your service. And as far as anything else that's going on right now, we have to just continue to hope that we are following the best guidelines that we can, and there's a lot of unknowns. I can tell you that my husband does the testing, and my husband has had two stick swabs down infants' necks to get the tests, and it is very intense, and it's very upsetting, and we're just trying to do our best to get through it, and we're all just in this together, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Anyone else? Mrs. Putup?
Just wanted to thank everyone. I appreciated Donna's report. Our teachers aren't just employees of the district. They're members of the community, as are paraprofessionals, custodians, bus drivers, everyone. Everyone does their part. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess I get the last word. I echo your comments, Mrs. Kumar. I thank you for calling in, Mrs. Reaver. That was an excellent report, and I'm happy that all the teachers are coming together and doing things for the community, even though we can't be together in our schools. No one has forgotten you, and you certainly haven't forgotten us. Mr. Resmer, thank you for your comments, and thank you for your well wishes for my day. Just as a reminder, we have no... Oh, sorry, I have a timer on. Stop it. We have no idea when or if we will reopen the schools. Obviously, we're waiting for guidance from the state, from the governor. We're still closed until May 15th, and I can't even broach that subject because it's an unknown at this point. Clearly, we don't want to do anything that'll put our staff or students in harm's way. So again, to everyone in the community, we're here, we're with you. If you need us, we're available. The staff is available, the teachers are available, and I hope everyone is staying well, and you're in all of our thoughts if you're not. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Can I get a move to close?
Move.
Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mr. Duffy? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye. Stay safe.